The roll call after the suspend. So suspend muna. Bayang Magiliw invocation, tapos few words. Suspend roll call. Thursday daw, Thursday. Tapos baka si Kwan, si Essingson. Oo, kasi hindi pwede si. Kili tiga daw. Hi. Come on. Bangs agabo three times. Boss. Roll call dito. Oo, ano? Bangs agabo three times. Get by. Okay. Dito. Say. Roll call.
The session is called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by Representative James Jojo Ang of Partly's Usuag Ilongo.
We remember that we are in the presence of God as we gather in his hall. Let us pray. Heavenly, loving God, we humbly come before you and we acknowledge you as the center of today's session. In you we live, move, and have our being. We are nothing and we can do nothing apart from you. Today, we thank you for the gift of life and for allowing us to gather once again as we resume the regular session in the House of Representatives. We seek you for your grace, wisdom, strength, and joy as we tackle legislation that will positively impact lifelong opportunity for our countrymen. May your Holy Spirit encourage, enlighten, and equip us, our deliberation and decisions. May your teaching guide us as we craft laws that will empower our fellow Filipinos. May your action inspire us to translate the needs of our fellow Filipinos to meaningful legislation. We will continue to remember and reflect that as House of Representatives in Congress, we are mere instrument in your grand purpose and plan of building and blessing our nation. Dear God, we also lift up to you in prayer that many concerns of the whole nation, including natural calamities, power outages, and the rising cost of good that we face. Please help us to act accordingly with love, respect, and harmony as we respond to the challenges of our time. May the fullness of your love unite us in today's session and onwards. Help each of our faith communities fulfill our mission and do our work for the people and make our country a better place. All this we pray in the name of our God of many names. Amen.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Majority Leader.
One minute suspension.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Our distinguished colleagues, the honorable Speaker of the House of Representatives, Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes will address the body.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Members of the 19th Congress, I welcome you back to the remainder of the first regular session of this 19th Congress. I wish that you all had sufficient time during this break for a little bit of rest and respite from your duties, but I know that by his attendance at the coronation of King Charles of the United Kingdom. I, along with Senior Deputy Speaker, Dr. Makapagal Arroyo, Deputy Speaker Dong Gonzalez, as well as Chairman Toby Astianco, accompanied our President to Washington DC in his meetings with, among others, the President of the United States, President Biden, Vice President Kamala Harris, also Secretary Lloyd Austin of the Department of Defense, as well as ranking members of the CIA, Director Russell and Deputy Director Cohen. This trip was the most productive and most successful one and one that has brought Philippine-US relations to its greatest heights in the recent years. I am proud to say that we, in conjunction with the Executive, had done our work with our counterparts on Capitol Hill in furthering and in enhancing and in deepening the relationships between the two countries, the Philippines and the United States, long historical allies, particularly during this period of uncertainty post-COVID and the tensions that affect our region. As we face the remainder of the first regular session, we have merely four weeks to complete our legislative agenda that has been prescribed by no less than our President in his first sauna plus those that have been identified as priority measures in the lead-up. Later this afternoon, I shall engage with our party leaders to see how we can make sure that the remainder of these four weeks before we adjourn CNEDA is used most efficiently and maximized so that we can achieve our goals in making sure that the common legislative agenda, not just of both Houses but that of the Executive, are achieved. And with that, I implore all of you to continue with the hard work that has now become a hallmark of the 19th Congress, a most hard-working and diligent Congress we have been. And I believe that we can still do much, much more in the furtherance of the interests of the Filipino people. Marami marami salam at sa trabaho sa paglingkod niyo sa bayan. Mabuhay po ang congreso. Mabuhay po kayong lahat. Session suspended.
Do you enjoy the preparation? Hi, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. As we go. Hi Kong Toby, anong mo rin sa BFF sino gusto sumama?
Session is called to order. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretaries directed to call the roll of members. Please proceed.
Roll call of members: Honorable Representatives Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansya, Asistio, Atayde, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Muhain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uwi, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Tsunggalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Kopilar, Ko Huangko Jaime, Ko Huangko Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Porvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Juarezma, Da Go'ok, Dalipe, Dalo, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, Divinesha, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalin, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Pentebelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Saadro, Goriseta, Piko, Gimpo, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga Ara, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Laksonoel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luisstro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisas Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Regensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Brilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbango, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulu, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chei, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tiyeng, Tolentino, Tulfo Juseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villaferta Luis Raymond, Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villard, Villarazas Suarez, Villarica, Biolago, Yamsuan, Yap Chrishyenter, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 310 members responded to the call.
With 310 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a call room. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of Journal Number 66 dated March 2023, Journal Number 67 dated March 21, 2023, and Journal Number 68 dated March 22, 2023 were already distributed to the members, I move that with dispensary the reading of the same and approve said journals.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Journal Number 66 dated March 2023, Journal Number 67 dated March 21, 2023, and Journal Number 68 dated March 22, 2023 are hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as measures, communications, and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill Number 7759, 7760, 7761, and 7762, converting certain roads in the province of Cebu into national roads by Representative Frasco.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 7765, declaring Mount Caniao in Bantai Ilocosur as an ecotourism zone by Representative Singson Ronald.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill Number 7766, establishing anti-agricultural smuggling courts by Representative Barba.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 7771, 7772, declaring Kan Umantad Falls and Kan Coca Hills in Kan di Hibe Hall as ecotourism sites by Representative Tutor.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill Number 7773, providing for a national digital transformation policy by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee... Uh, House Bill Number 77...
73. Yes, sir.
Yes, to the Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 7774, establishing a rental housing subsidy program for informal settler families by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill Number 7775, granting hazard pay to public prosecutors exposed to hazardous situations and performing hazardous duties related to assigned cases and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes, Ferdinand Martin, Dalipe, Marcos, Romualdes Yedamarie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 7776, amending the Murang Korente Act for the decrease the prices of electricity in the country by Representatives Da Go'ok and De Jesus.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill Number 7777, expanding the application of the Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill Number 7778, providing for the Magna Carta for public disaster risk reduction and management workers by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill Number 7779, including responsive empowered and service-centered youth in the Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council in all levels by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill Number 7780, including the incumbent national and local officers of fraternities, sororities, and other organizations as persons liable for violations of the Anti-Hazing Act of 2018 by Representative Teves Jose.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 7781, creating the Maharlika Cooperative Apex Bank of the Philippines by Representative Tariela.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill Number 7782, CPR Training in Public Spaces Law by Representative Kari.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 7783, Defibrillators in Public Places Act by Representative Kari.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 7784, Cancer Screening Early Detection and Prevention Program for Filipinos in All Government Health Facilities Nationwide by Representative Kari.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 7785, establishing the Doos del Norte National High School in Doos del Norte Hindang Leta by Representative Kari.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 7786, requiring all new residential, commercial, and institutional buildings in the Philippines to install rainwater collection system by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 7787 and 7788, establishing fish ports with ice plant and cold storage facilities in La Libertad, Gotalak, and Lintangan, Cebuco, San Boanga del Norte by Representative Amatong.
To the Committee on Aqua Culture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 7789, converting the Mayimbung National High School Annex in La Omayimbung Sulu into the Mayimbung National Technical Vocational High School by Representatives Tan Tambut and Tan Samir.
To the Committee on Aqua Culture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 7790, converting the Sulu Provincial Hospital in Holosulu into a tertiary-level hospital under the direct control and supervision and management of the DOH, increasing its bed capacity to 200 beds by Representatives Tan Tambut and Tan Samir.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 7791, providing for the Magna Carta for barangays by Representatives Tan Tambut and Tan Samir.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 7792, converting the Mayimbung Municipal Port in Mayimbung Sulu into Mayimbung Port Authority by Representatives Tan Tambut and Tan Samir.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 7793, increasing the rates of combat duty pay and combat incentive pay of the AFP and the uniform personnel of the PNP by Representatives Tan Tambut and Tan Samir.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Number seventy seven ninety four, granting barangay health workers a monthly honorarium in addition to incentives and benefits by Representatives Tan Tambut and Tan Samir.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number seventy seven ninety five, providing temporary financial and counseling assistance to the family of indigent widow or widower upon the death of spouse by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill Number seventy seven ninety six, exempting PUV drivers from the burden of paying regulatory fees and charges imposed by the LTO for the application and renewal of the professional driver's license by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number seventy seven ninety seven, mandating the allotment of at least two places of worship or prayer rooms in every government building, military camp, hospital, and privately-owned mall, factory, hospital, and other big business establishment by Representatives Tan Tambut and Tan Samir.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill Number seventy seven ninety nine, institutionalizing the nineteen eighty nine UPD&amp;D Accord by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number seventy eight hundred, strengthening the development of the bamboo industry in the Philippines by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Number seventy eight oh one, amending RA Number seventy three oh nine, creating a Board of Claims under the Department of Justice for victims of unjust imprisonment or detention and victims of violent crimes and for other purposes by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero two, providing for the condemnation of all unpaid principal interests, penalties, or surcharges on loans secured by Agrarian Reform Redeficiencies under the Comprehensive Agrarian Reprogram by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Agrarian Reform.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero three, institutionalizing e-government in the government by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero four, rightsizing the national government to improve public service delivery by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero five, institutionalizing industry cluster-based programs and projects through inter-local cooperation and people's participation by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on People's Participation.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero six, protecting consumers and merchants engaged in internet transactions, creating the E-Commerce Bureau by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero seven, instituting a national land use policy by Representative Villanueva.
To the Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero eight, expanding the use of the Legal Assistance Fund, amending Section twenty six of the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of nineteen ninety five by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill Number seventy eight zero nine, instituting the Medical Reserve Corps by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number seventy eight ten, institutionalizing the participation of civil society organizations in the preparation and authorization process of the annual national budget by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on People's Participation.
House Bill Number seventy eight eleven, imposing excise tax on plastic bags by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Number seventy eight twelve, establishing an onsite in-city or near-city resettlement program for informal settler families in accordance with a people's plan by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill Number seventy eight thirteen, promoting and revitalizing the salt industry of the Philippines by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Number seventy eight fourteen, to protect Filipinos from the harmful effects of trans fatty acids by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number seventy eight fifteen, instituting reforms in real property valuation and assessment in the Philippines, reorganizing the Bureau of Local Government Finance by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill Number seventy eight sixteen, expanding the regulatory jurisdiction of the MTRCB to include streaming services by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill Number seventy eight seventeen, providing compassionate and right-of-access to medical cannabis, expanding research into its medicinal properties by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs and the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number seventy eight eighteen, protecting aircrafts, vessels, and their crews and passengers from dangerous laser beams by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number seventy eight twenty, amending Section thirty-three of the DILG Act of nineteen ninety to include other baccalaureate degrees to the lateral entry program for line officers by Representative Agarao.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Number seventy eight twenty one, strengthening the capability of the University of the Philippines as a research university by Representative Rilio.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number seventy eight twenty two, limiting the class hours of public school teachers to six hours by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number seventy eight twenty three, creating four additional divisions and clarifying the compositions, qualifications, and benefits of the Commissioners, Labor Arbiters, Clerks of Court, and Employees of the NLRC by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Number seventy eight twenty four, creating the Center for the West Philippine Sea Studies attached to the DFA by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Special Committee on West Philippine Sea.
House Bill Number seventy eight twenty five, regulating the practice of forestry in the Philippines by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill Number seven eight two six, authorizing government hospitals under the DOH to retain and utilize all their income and interest derived from deposits for maintenance and other operating expenses and capital outlays by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight two seven, to promote and support the development and growth of the Philippine film industry, creating the Philippine Film Commission by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Bill seven eight two eight, exempting microinsurance policies from value-added tax, tax on life insurance premiums, and documentary stamp tax by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill seven eight two nine, granting survivorship benefits to the surviving legitimate spouse, children, and/or parents, next of kin of a deceased chairperson, commissioner, or labor arbiter of the NLRC by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill seven eight three zero, creating the Office for Investor Facilitation and Protection by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill seven eight three one, granting old-age pension for life to senior citizens who retired under RA Number one six one six as well as survivorship benefits to their survivors by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Special Committee of Senior Citizens.
House Bill seven eight three two, providing compulsory welfare insurance program for all overseas contract workers by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill seven eight three three, appropriating the sum of one billion pesos for the improvement, fortification, and building of structures in the Calayaan group of islands by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill seven eight three four, supporting effective programs that provide assistance to parents who want to help their children become successful readers by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill seven eight three five, providing for the plantilla medical specialists one and two items for the post-residency fellows, subspecialty trainees at the UPPGH by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill seven eight three six, establishing the Philippine Transportation Safety Board by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization, the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill seven eight three seven, amending Paragraph F of Section forty-seven of the Electric Power Industry Reform Act of two thousand and one by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill seven eight three eight, prohibiting the PNP or any person from designating gangs by their hometown, region, or religious or ethnic community by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill seven eight four zero, institutionalizing the annual grant of the World Teachers Day incentive benefit for public school teachers and increasing the amount of the incentive to three thousand pesos by Representative Campos.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill seven eight four one, requiring all national, regional, and provincial government hospitals to establish, operate, and maintain a dialysis ward or unit in their respective hospital and providing free dialysis treatment to indigent patients by Representatives Yap Eric, Duterte, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight four two, extending the period of availability of estate tax amnesty by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill seven eight four three, establishing the Northern Iloilo General Hospital in San Dionisio Iloilo by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Asidre, and Tupas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight four four, creating one additional branch of family court in the tenth judicial region to be stationed in Kagayan de Oro City, Mesamis Oriental by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number seven eight four five, seven eight four six, and seven eight four eight, creating additional branches of regional trial courts in the tenth judicial region to be stationed in El Salvador City, in Itau, Tagoloan, and Kagayan de Oro City, Mesamis Oriental by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill seven eight four seven, creating three additional branches of the municipal trial court in cities to be stationed in Kagayan de Oro City by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill seven eight four nine, amending Section twenty-five of PD Number one sixty-eight, establishing a new system of retirement and separation for military personnel of the AFP by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill seven eight five zero, amending certain sections of RA forty-two hundred, an act to prohibit and penalize wiretapping and other related violations of the privacy of communication by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill seven eight five one, expanding the coverage of incentives extended to the national athletes and coaches by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill seven eight five two, further strengthening the system of birth registration of children in need of special protection in the Philippines by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill seven eight five three, penalizing disobedience to the writ of habeas corpus and other acts by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill seven eight five four, establishing environmental units in every lending institution to assess the environmental component of loan applications by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill seven eight five five, amending the National Health Insurance Act of nineteen ninety-five as amended by RA ten six oh six by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight five six, requiring the appointment of lawyers belonging to indigenous groups in areas dominated by indigenous peoples as judges by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill seven eight five seven, providing for the regulation of oil and gas pipelines, creating the National Pipeline Board by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill seven eight five eight, creating the Spratly Island Task Force under the AFP and appropriating the sum of one billion pesos for that purpose by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill seven eight five nine, regulating poles and pole attachments by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Information and Communication Technology.
House Bill seven eight six zero, to promote rural health by providing for an accelerated program for the construction of a potable water supply system in every barangay in the country within three years by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill seven eight six one, to upgrade the salary scales or levels of public dentists by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill seven eight six two, providing telecommunications systems, accessibility to the hearing impaired and speech impaired by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
House Bill seven eight six three, reverting to the national government the discharge of basic agricultural functions and responsibilities devolved to LGUs by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food and the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill seven eight six four, establishing a universal newborn hearing screening program for the prevention, early diagnosis, and intervention of hearing loss among children by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight six five, providing for an anti-illegal recruitment law of the Philippines by Representative Magzino.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill seven eight six six, to require the giving of free medical and dental service to indigent children by Representatives Yap Eric, Duterte, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight six seven, providing for incentives to members of the legal profession engaged in the defense of the rights of indigent indigenous peoples by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill seven eight six eight, mandating the establishment of public crematoriums in cities and municipalities and extending free cremation services to indigent families by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill seven eight six nine, strengthening the National Nutrition Council by Representative Nava.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight seven zero, renaming Valenzuela Medical Center to Antonio M. Serapio Medical Center by Representatives Enverga and Martinez.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight seven one, providing for a one hundred fifty peso across-the-board wage recovery increase in the salary rates of employees and workers in the private sector across the regions by Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill seven eight seven two, establishing a Philippine blood services network and promoting safe and adequate supply of blood in all blood centers nationwide by Representative Romaldo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight seven three, extending the period of availability of the estate tax amnesty by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Number seven eight seven four, seven eight seven five, seven eight seven six, and seven eight seven seven, converting certain roads in the lone legislative district of the city of General Santos into national roads by Representative Atcharon.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill seven eight seven eight, institutionalizing mechanisms for the state protection of citizens below twenty-one years old whose parent or both parents are not living with them from substance abuse, abuse of prescription medicine, drug dependence, drug addiction, alcoholism, and other similar forms of drug or substance misuse, including protection from the forming of gambling, gaming, and/or smoking habits and other harmful habitudes and addictions by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill seven eight seven nine, to develop, protect, and promote the livestock, poultry, and dairy industries and their value chain to provide for a livestock, poultry, and dairy competitive enhancement fund by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill seven eight eight zero, declaring October twenty-fourth of every year a special non-working holiday in Angat Bulakan in celebration of its founding anniversary to be known as Araw ng Angat by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill seven eight eight one, amending Section twenty-nine of the Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Revision of Loss.
House Bill seven eight eight two, amending certain provisions of the Paternity Leave Act of nineteen ninety-six by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment and the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill seven eight eight three, banning the sale of individual cigarette sticks by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry and the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight eight four, prohibiting government offices and agencies from denying citizens access to enter said offices on the basis of attire by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill seven eight eight five, amending Section nine of the Enhanced Basic Education Act of twenty thirteen by Representative Santos.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill seven eight eight six, creating barangay police units thereby establishing police stations at the barangay level by Representative Dayang Hirang.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill seven eight eight seven, establishing in-city vertical housing resettlement programs for informal settler families in high-density urban areas in the country by Representative Valeriano.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill seven eight eight eight, providing a Magna Carta for esports gamers by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill seven eight eight nine, establishing a nursing scholarship and return service program for deserving students by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill seven eight nine zero, institutionalizing the conduct of summer youth camp in every barangay by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill seven eight nine one, nationalizing the Kasoan High School in Kasoan, Mongkayo, Davao, de Oro into Kasoan National High School by Representative Zamora Maria Carmen.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill seven eight nine two, providing for protection and welfare benefits to persons with autism by Representative Magzino.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill seven eight nine three, amending RA Number one zero five three three, enhancing the Philippine basic education system by strengthening its curriculum and increasing the number of years for basic education by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill seven eight nine four, strengthening the Komelek by increasing the manpower complement in its field offices, providing office spaces separate and independent from LGUs by Representatives Mercado Revilia, Revilia Bryan, and Revilia Ramondjolo.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill seven eight nine five, creating an additional division of Court of Appeals to be stationed in the city of Davao by Representative Duterte.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill seven eight nine six, protecting animal patients against medical malpractice of veterinary medicine by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edvick.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill seven eight nine seven, penalizing prank callers to emergency hotlines by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill seven eight nine eight, providing for a system of redistributing and recycling food waste to promote food security by Representative Vargas.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill seven eight nine nine, establishing the National Police Clearance System by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill seven nine zero zero, providing for the revitalization and capability enhancement of the PNP by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Public Order To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
Hospital seven nine zero one, establishing a comprehensive and integrated flood prevention, control, defense, and management system for the province of Laguna by Representative Fernandez.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Solutions. House Resolution eight nine four, calling for an immediate congressional investigation to determine the complicity of Mercury Corp. in its open and wanton defiance of the benefits provided for senior citizens by Representatives Mercueta and Ordanes.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution eight nine five, directing the committees on energy and legislative franchises to jointly conduct an inquiry on the performance of the N G C P of its rights and obligation under the legislative franchise granted unto it in two thousand eight through R A nine five one one and to recommend possible amendments thereto and its compliance with the concession agreement with Transco and S.A. by Representatives Mercueta and Tanchai.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution eight nine six, directing the committee on overseas workers affairs to conduct inquiry on the utilization of the compulsory issue ones for repatriation of distressed O F Ws by Representative Mercueta.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution eight nine seven, congratulating and commending Filipino actor Romeo John Gonzalez Arcilia for winning the confetti World Pickup for the Best Actor in the Seventy-Eight Annual Venice International Film Festival by Representative Tambunting.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Resolution eight nine nine, eight nine eight, congratulating and commending the province of Kalinya for bugging the Guinness World Records of the largest gong and song and the largest bangga dance through the performance of its constituents during the celebration of its twenty-eighth founding anniversary of the province on the fifteenth February twenty twenty-three by Representative Tambunting.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Resolution eight nine nine, urging the committees on labor and employment and overseas workers affairs to look into the prevalence of bogus overseas job offerings victimizing Filipinos by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine zero zero, directing the committees on health, basic education, and other appropriate committees to conduct an inquiry on the increasing number of suicides among students and seeming mental health crises afflicting the educational sector by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine zero one, commending and congratulating Mary Justin Akat for winning the gold medal at the Open Weight Two Sarawak Premier International Silat Championships in Sarawak, Malaysia by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution numbers nine zero two and nine zero three, commending and congratulating Carlos Yulo for winning gold medals in the men's parallel bars and men's vault apparatus at the Fig Artistic Gymnastics Apparatus World Cup A G F Trophy twenty twenty-three in Baku, Azerbaijan, Azerbaijan by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine zero four, congratulating and commending the representatives of the Philippines at the Busan Coral Festival and Competition Twenty Twenty Two in Busan, South Korea by Representative Tambunting.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Resolution nine zero five, commending and congratulating Jessa Delacruz, Charajismundo, and Frances Elma for winning the gold medal at the Senior Women's Rego Team Sarawak Premier International Silat Championships in Sarawak, Malaysia by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine zero six, urging the committees on public works and highways and ecology to jointly inquire into the inadequate implementation of the nineteen eighty-nine law that mandates the construction of rainwater collectors in all barangays by Representative Campos.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine zero seven, directing the appropriate committee to conduct an inquiry on the closure of Central Azucarera Don Pedro Incorporated at the potential shutdown of other sugar mills by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine zero eight, directing the appropriate committee to conduct an investigation into the tragic incident involving Allison Shipping Lines M V Lady Mary Joy Three on March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, which resulted in the deaths and injuries of its passengers by Representative Hataman.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine zero nine, urging the House of Representatives through the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization to investigate the joint venture agreement between Bakolod City Water District and Prime Water Infrastructure Corporation and its impact on the provision of water services and security of tenure of employees of the Water District by Representatives Castro, Franz, Brosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine one zero, urging the D O T R to integrate foreign language studies into the K two twelve program by Representative Libanan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Resolution nine one six, congratulating and commending Mrs. Rosalinda P. Oximer for her unprecedented feat of completing the twenty twenty-three forty-two kilometers mile marathon in under six hours at the age of seventy-five by Representative Ordanes.
To the Committee on Rules. Oh, sorry. To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine one seven, condemning in the strongest terms the illegal profiling of lawyers ordered by the Surigao del Norte Provincial Police Office and directing the House through the Committee on Human Rights to investigate the same by Representatives Castro, Franz, Brosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine one eight, for the conduct of an investigation on the missing funds with G cash, PayMaya, and other e-wallet accounts by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine two one, urging the D O T R to look into the current status of airport security facilities and equipment in the country's airport terminals by Representatives Duterte and Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine two two, commending and congratulating the top nature in the twenty twenty-two bar examination Caesar Matthew Jared Dayday, a pride of barangay Baklaran Parinyaki City by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution nine two three, expressing profound congratulations and commendation to the Filipino youth athlete Celine Marie A. Abalos for winning the golf championship at the twenty twenty-three Australian Master U S Kids Golf Tournament in Hunter Valley, north of Sydney, Australia, held on April seventeen to eighteen, twenty twenty-three by Representative Abalos.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine two four, commending and congratulating Marlon Tapales for winning the W B A and I B F Superbantamweight Championship by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine two five, congratulating and commending the Philippine National Hockey Team for winning the gold medal at the twenty twenty-three Ice Hockey World Championships Division Four in Ulaanbaatar, Mongolia by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution nine two six, urging the appropriate House committee to conduct an inquiry regarding the shortage of plastic drivers license cards issued by the L T O by Representative Herrera.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine two seven, directing the Committee on Energy to conduct an inquiry on the questionable privatization bidding process of the one sixty-five megawatt Kaseknan hydroelectric power plant in Nueva Ecija conducted by the San Corp. by Representative Mercueta.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine two eight, expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of the Honorable Albert Ferreros Del Rosario, former Secretary of Foreign Affairs and Philippine Ambassador to the United States by Representatives Romualdes, Philomen Martin, Dalipe, Libanan, Marcos, Romelda, Yada Marie, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine two nine, directing the Committee on Energy to conduct an inquiry on the continued disparity and overpricing of fuel prices in northern Luzon by Representative Gomart.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine two nine three zero, urging the House to conduct an inquiry on the negative implications of the thirty-eight U S Philippines Balikatan exercises on the livelihood of affected communities and on the environment by Representatives Brosas, Castro, Franz, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution nine three one, directing the House through the Committee on Information and Communications Technology to investigate the alleged massive data breach of the records of the P N P and B I B I R Special Action Force Operations Management Division and C S C by Representatives Castro, Franz, Brosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages for the Senate, message dated March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, informing the House of Representatives that on March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, the Senate adopted Senate Concord Resolution Number Six. Message dated March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, informing the House of Representatives that on March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, the Senate adopted Senate Concord Resolution Number Nine.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Communications, letters and email from certain local chief executives and officials transmitting to the House of Representatives copies of their reports in fund utilization and status of program, project, activity, and implementation relative to the local government support fund and the Bayaniang grant to cities, municipalities, and provinces for certain months of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Letter dated February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three of the D O T R Under Secretary for Administration and Finance transmitting to the House a copy of their appropriations, arrangements, obligations, and disbursements as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, of the Presidential Advisor on Legislative Affairs and Head of P L L O submitting to the House certain financial accountability reports.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter stated March sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-three of the Acting Presidential Advisor on Peace, Reconstruction, Unity, informing the House that Opablu's financial reports for the months of January and February twenty twenty-three were submitted to the unified reporting system and posted on their official website.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated March seven, twenty twenty-three, of the N I A Digital Manager submitting to the House a copy of the status of infrastructure procurement implementation as of February fifteen, twenty twenty-three, in the first district of Leyte.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated March eighth, twenty twenty-three, of the D O T R Under Secretary for Administration and Finance transmitting to the House certain financial reports for the month of February twenty twenty-three.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letters dated March fifteen and sixteen, twenty twenty-three, of the Bank Officer Six, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Affairs, B S P, transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain B S P issuances.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated March seventeen, twenty twenty-three, of the B S P Governor transmitting to the House a copy of their report on outstanding Philippine external debt as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Accomplishment Report of D I L G Region Six, Region Eight.
This is letter dated. Next page. Session suspended. Session is resumed. Please proceed. Accomplishment Report.
Of D I L G Region Eight.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Paris Quarter D Financial Report of Operations Submitted by several cities and municipalities.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report dated April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, of the Secretary General, House of Representatives, unrolled copies of the consolidated version of Senate Bill One Eight Four Nine and House Bill Six Five One Seven, which should return to the Senate and to be transmitted to the Office of the President for his excellency's consideration and signature pursuant to section eighteen H, Rule Six of House, of Rule Six of the House. Committee Reports. Committee Report Four Seven Eight, submitted to Committees on Climate Change, Appropriations, and Ways and Means on House Bill Seven Seven Six Seven. Committee Report Numbers Four Seven Nine, Four Eight Zero, and Four Eight One, submitted with the Committees on Public Works and Highways and Appropriations on House Bill Seven Seven Six Eight, Seven Seven Six Nine, and Seven 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 Zero respectively. Committee Report Four Eight Two, submitted with the Committees on Government Enterprises and Privatization on House Bill Seven Seven Nine Eight. Committee Report Numbers Four Eight Three, submitted by the Committees on Foreign Affairs on House Bill Seven Eight One Nine. Committee Report Four Eight Four, submitted with the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Appropriations on House Bill Seven Eight Three Nine. Committee Report Numbers Four Eight Five, Four Eight Six, Four Eight Seven, Four Eight Eight, Four Eight Nine, Four Nine Zero, Four Nine One, and Four Nine Two, submitted by the Committees on Foreign Affairs on House Resolution Numbers Nine One One, Nine One Two, Nine One Three, Nine One Four, Nine One Five, Six Nine Ones, Nine One Nine, and Nine Two Zero respectively. Committee Report Numbers Four Nine Three, Four Nine Four, Four Nine Five, Four Nine Six, Four Nine Seven, and Four Nine Nine, submitted by the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers Seven Nine Zero Four, Seven Nine Zero Five, Seven Nine Zero Six, Seven Nine Zero Seven, Seven Nine Zero Eight, and Seven Nine Two Two respectively. Committee Report Four Nine Eight, submitted with the Committees on Ways and Means on House Bill Seven Nine Zero Nine. Committee Report Numbers Five Zero Zero and Five Zero One, submitted with the Committees on Public Works and Highways and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers Seven Nine Three Three and Seven Nine Three Four respectively. And Committee Report Number, Committee Report Five Zero Two, submitted with the Committees on Veterans Affairs and Welfare and Appropriations on House Bill Seven Nine Three Nine.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Adjourn the leader.
Mr. Speaker, before you proceed, may I request that you acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Rodolfo Ombong M. Ordanes, representative of the Senior Citizens Party List in the person of Mr. Hilaryon A. Delacruz, Vice President representing the North Senior Citizens Association and Board of Directors of Fescap Nueva Viscaya.
Welcome to the House of Representatives, guests of Honorable Rodolfo Ordanes. Welcome. Adjourn the leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Monday and pursuant to our rules, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The chair hears non-motion. It's approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the privilege hour. Mr. Speaker, I now move that the lady from ACT, Act Teachers' Party List, the Honorable Franz L. Castro, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Representative Franz Castro is recognized. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat, ginawang speaker. Maraming salamat, um, Lord Leader. Magadang araw, ginawang speaker sa mga kapwa-kinatawan at sa ating mga kababayan. Ang init, ibang-iba ang init na nararanasan natin ngayon sa Pilipinas. Marami ang hinahay blood, nahihimatay, at nagakasakit dahil sa init ng panahon. Mapapatawa ka na lang sa mga memes tungkol sa mga Pilipino na nagmamainit ng kape sa panahong ito. Nakakatawa pero realidad ay bising-bisi tayo sa kakapaypay at kakapunas sa tumatagatak nating pawis. Ganito ang nararanasan ng mga estudyante, mga guro, mga construction workers, mga manggagawa sa pabrika, mga driver, at mga commuters. Kung kaya naman, paalala natin sa ating mga kababayan, winom ng maraming tubig, at stay at home kung maaari. Kami nga sa Act Teachers' Party List at Alliance of Concerned Teachers, pinapanawagan na ibalik sa academic calendar sa dati dahil kawawang-kawawa ang mga bata at guro na nagti tiis sa mainit na classroom. Pero bukod sa academic calendar shift, mayron isang dapat pagtuuna ng pansin. Ito ay ang kakulangan o kawalan ng mga N A R S at medical personnel sa ating mga paaralan at maging sa mga pagawaan, mga ospital na sana ay makapagbigay ng sapat na alaga at atensyong medikal sa ating mga kababayan. Play, flight, fight. Ano nga ba ang mga hinahing ng ating mga N A R S at iba pang mga health workers kung bakit sila napipilitang mangibang bansa? Ano-ano ang kanilang mga laban at panawagan? Hindi lang sa kanilang kagalingan at kapakanan, kundi pati na rin para sa karapatan at kalusugan ng sambayanan. Kulang na kulang tayo ng N A R S sa bansa. Kulang na kulang tayo ng NARS sa bansa. Sinabi ng DOH noong May 4 nabagamat, maraming guro ma-graduate, 178,628 lamang sa 509,000 na mga NARS na mayroong lisensya ay nagtatrabaho bilang NARS sa loob ng bansa. Sa bilang na ito, 109,000 ay nasa private sector at 69,500 naman ay nasa public sector. Samantala, mayron lamang tayong 44,602 na doktor sa bansa, kung saan 27,000 ay nasa public sector at 16,000 naman ay nasa private sector. Lumalabas na mayron lamang na 1.6 na NARS at 0.4 na doktor kada 1,000 na populasyon. Sinabi rin ng DOH na kinakailangan ng labindalawang taon para mapunan ang kulang na 127,000 na nurses ngayon para makamit ang demand na 305,708 nurses. Nasa 23 years naman para mapunan ang kulang na 114,000 na mga doktor para mapunan ang demand na 159,548 physicians. Kung ibabatay naman sa sinumite ng DOH na datos noong pinagdedipatahan natin ang 2023 Pambansang Budget, 175,900 lamang na mga NARS, 40,850 na mga doktor, at 57,108 na mga midwives ang nagtatrabaho bilang mga health professionals sa public at private sectors. Ginawang speaker, lumalabas na mayron lamang tayong 2.51 doktor, NARS, at midwives kada 1,000 population. Malayong-malayo sa international standard na 4.45 per 1,000 population. Nakakalituman at paiba-iba ang mga numero na sinasabi ng mga opisyal ng DOH iisa lamang ang malinaw. Gaya ng mga guro, overwork, at underpaid ang ating mga NARS. Sobrang lala ng understopping sa mga ospital. Mayrong mga ulat na umaabot pa nga sa 1:50 ang nurse-to-patient ratio. Malayong-malayo rin sa ideal ratio na 1:12. Wala namang shortage ng NARS sa Pilipinas. Sa katunayan, ayon sa datos ng PRC, 509,000 ang lisensyadong mga NARS. Ang problema ay napipilitan ang marami ng nangingibang bansa o hindi kaya ay nagtatrabaho labas sa kanilang propesyon. Kung ating babalikan ang datos mula sa PRC as of December 2021, 316,405 nurses o mahigit na 50% ng actively registered nurses ay nasa labas ng bansa, either temporary or permanent status. Ang solusyon sana ay mag-hire ng maraming regular health workers. Ngunit, ang realidad ay kontraktual. Ang problemang ito, ilang taon ang inirereklamo ng mga health workers. Essential at vital ang trabaho ng mga NARS at health workers. Ang trabahong ginagampanan nila ay 24/7 para masiguro ang buhay, kaligtasan, kalusugan ng ating mga mamamayan. Ngunit sa kinasamaang palad, tulad din ang marami mga manggagawa at kawaninang pamahalaan. Marami ay kontraktual sa hanay na mga NARS at health workers. Sabi nga ng DOH, nasa 40% to 45% ng health workers sa public health facilities ay under job orders. Imbis napunan at dagdagan ang mga bakanting plantilia positions, kontrakwalisasyon ang programa ng pamahalaan sa forma ng National Health Workforce Support System o 'yung tinatawag din nilang Human Resources for Health Deployment Program. Isang malaking palaisipan sa kinatawang ito, kailan pa hindi naging necessary at desirable ang trabaho ng mga NARS, mga doktor, at iba pang mga health workers para hindi sila gawing regular na empleyado ng DOH at na mga private health facilities? Paano ba naman tayo makakahikayat na mga graduates na maging NARS ng bayan? Kung overwork na natin sila, walang kasiguraduhan sa trabaho, mababa at late pa nila natatanggap ang kanila mga sahod at mga benepisyo? Ginawang speaker, mga kapwa-kinatawan, sa katunayan, kahit na naglabas na ng desisyon ang Korte Suprema na dapat ay salary grade 15 ang entry-level salary ng public health nurses, hanggang ngayon ay hindi pa rin ito natatamasa ng lahat. Sa ilalim ng Budget Circular Number 2020-4, as amended by Budget Circular Number 2021-2, naglagay ang Department of Budget and Management ng exemption sa COVID-19 ng Section 3 ng Philippine Nursing Act. Hindi isinama ang mga nurses na nagtatrabaho sa mga GOCC at iba pang mga ahensya, exempted sa RA 6758. Ipinagka-it din ang salary grade 15 sa mga kontraktual na mga NARS. Mababa na nga ang 36,619 pesos na buwan ang sahod ng public sector sa public sector. Kumpara sa kinikita ng mga NARS sa ibang bansa, hindi pa lahat nakakatanggap ng nararapat nilang sahod. Sa hanay naman na mga NARS sa pribadong sektor, hindi na sapat ang tinatanggap nilang sahod. Kung sa NCR, mayron mga NARS na sumasahod lamang ng 570 per day, 500 pesos per day, o 12,540 pesos per month. Mas mababa pa ito kung ikaw ay nagtatrabaho sa labas ng NCR. Malayong-malayo ito sa 1,161 pesos per day o 25,248 pesos per month na family living wage na kinakailangan para mamuhay o nabubuhay ng disente ang isang pamilyang Pilipino. Kaya ang panawagan ng mga NARS ay itaas ang minimum na buwan ang sahod, patungong 50,000 pesos kada buwan. Masakla pa ay underpaid na ang ating mga NARS at mga health workers, late pa nila natatanggap ang kanilang mga sahod at benepisyo. Sinasabi sa committee hearing noong webes na ang mga dahilan ng late payment ng pandemic benefits ay kawalan ng mowa sa pagitan ng LGU at mga pribadong mga ospital at pagsusumite ng liquidation reports. Sa atin pa ngang mga natatandaan mga nakaraang taon, ginawang speaker, inamin din ang DOH sa kongreso na mayroong 64 billion pesos arrears para sa mga retroactive implementation ng health emergency allowance mula July 2021. Hinohostage ang benepisyo ng mga health workers kahit hindi naman sila ang may sala. Hindi sapat ang mga retorika. Hindi sapat na manawagan lamang ang gobyerno na dito magtrabaho ang ating mga NARS at health workers. Hanggang hindi nasosolusyonan ang mga batayang mga dahilan, mananatili ang kasalukuyang kalagayan kung saan napipilitang mangibang bayan o magtrabaho sa labas ng kanilang propesyon ang ating mga NARS at health workers. Sasabihin natin, dito sila magtrabaho pero ang kalagayan ay overwork na nga sila, mababa at delayed pa ang pasahod, kulang ang benepisyo, kontraktual, at nilalabag ang kanilang mga karapatan. Sino ba naman ang nahihikayat na manatili sa Pilipinas kung walang ibinibigay na pagpapahalaga sa kanila? Hindi kayang pakainin ang mga retorika at hindi kayang isalba ng mga salita ang buhay ng ating mga mamamayan. Kailangan dinggin ang gobyerno at umaksyon batay sa interes ng mahirap, pinagkakaitan, at inapi. Kaya sa paggunitan natin ng May 7 bilang Health Workers' Day, sama-sama nating ipaglaban at ipanawagan ang sapat na sahod para sa ating mga nurse, 50,000 pesos kada buwan na minimum pay. Bayaran na ang mga pandemic benefits. Ipatupad ang safe health worker-to-patient ratio. Kontraktual, gawing regular, ang health budget itaas sa 5% ng GDP. Tigilan ang privatization of health programs and facilities at libreng gamot at pagamot sa public health facilities. Ang mga NARS kasama ng bayan ngayon po ay lumalaban para sa isang disente at nakabubuhay na sweldo at siyempre po 'yung mahusay na kalagayan para sa kanila. Tulang po, ginawang speaker, magandang hapon muli.
Adjourn the Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Castro to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. Adjourn the Leader. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Arlene D. Brosas of the Gabyella Partilist to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Brosas is recognized to avail of the privilege hour. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, sa mga kapwa-kinatawan dito sa loob ng kongreso at sa mamamayang Pilipinong nanunuod at nakikinig sa ating session ngayong araw, magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Nitong mga nakaraang araw at linggo ay sunod-sunod ang reklamo ng ating mga kababayan dahil sa sobrang init ng panahon. May mga nakakaya ng magbukas ng aircon habang ang iba ay nagtitiis sa manu-manong pamaypay o di kaya ay electric fan na tila mas nagpapainit pa sa malaexos nitong buga. Para bang ang option lang ay magtiis sa malaoven na loob ng bahay o matusta sa init ng araw sa labas? Nakakalungkot na dagdag pa sa dilema ng pagkakaroon o hindi ng mga appliances pampalamig gaya ng aircon o electric fan ay kung gagamitin ba ito dahil tila ang bawat oras na iibsan ang init ay bumubutas sa bulsa. Aasahan mong mataas ang magiging bill sa kuryente. Sa panahon ngayon, privilehiyo ang paggamit ng kuryente, lalo sa panahon ng tag-init. Nag-anun siyang meralko nitong Marso ng taas singil sa kuryente dahil umano sa scheduled maintenance ng malampaya facility. Sa isang pahayag, sinabi ng meralko na magtataas sila ng 0.55 per kilowatt hour. Ibig sabihin mula sa 10.89 per kilowatt hour noong febrero naging 11.43 pesos per kilowatt hour ito noong Marso. Ang isang household na kumokonsumo ng 200 kilowatt hour ay magkakaroon ng pagtataas, pagtaas ng 109 pesos sa kanilang kabuang singil sa kuryente. Bunga nito nagulantang ang ating mga kababayan noong makita ang kanilang bill sa kuryente. Napakahirap nito, lalo na sa isang ina na pilit na pinagkakasya ang kanilang budget. Sabi ng isang nanay na aming nakausap, mula sa dating 2,700 na bill namin naging 4,000 ito. Hindi namin alam saan namin pupulutin ang dagdag na 1,300 pesos. Doble-dobling pasakit din ito, lalo sa mga manggagawang kumikita ng minimum na 570 pesos na sahod. Average na 11,400 per month na kailangang maglaan ng humigit-kumulang 2,617 pesos kada buwan para sa bills ng ilaw at tubig ayon sa 2023 Family Living Wage Compensation ng Ivan Foundation. Halos one-fourth ng minimum na sahod. Paano pa kaya ang mga nasa informal economy na hindi tiyak ang minimum nakita o mga mas mababa pa sa minimum wage ang sahod? Bukod sa pagtaas ng singil noong Marso, hinihiling din ng meralko ang pagaproba ng Energy Regulatory Commission, ERC, na mangolekta ng kanilang under-recoveries mula 2020 hanggang 2022 na nagkakahalaga ng 7.98 billion. Iminumungkahin nilang kolektahin ito sa loob ng labindalawang buwan. Tinatayang dagdag na 0.22 pesos kada kilowatt hour ang magiging epekto nito sa mga consumer. Mamamayang Pilipino na naman ang papasan ng taas presyo na ito habang ang patuloy, habang patuloy ang pagtaas ng tubo ng meralko. Tumalon ng 40.5% ang core net income ng meralko ngayong unang quarter ng taon. Mula 6.44 billion pesos noong nakaraang taon tungo sa 9.05 billion ngayong taon. Malinis na tubo na ito na gusto pang palubohin ng meralko gamit ang arbitraryong taas singil ngayong tag-init. Mr. Speaker, muling inirerehistro ng kinatawang ito ang panawagang magkaroon ng imbestigasyon dito sa muling taas presyo at ang pagrepaso hanggang sa pagbasura ng epiralo na siyang nagtulak sa deregulasyon at privatisasyon ng industriya ng kuryente. Tanging pribadong kompanya ang umaani ng limpak-limpak na salapi habang nagdurusa ang consumers sa taas singil sa kuryente, lalo na sa panahon ng tag-init. Sa gitna ng kawalan ng umento sa sahod at pagsirit, pagtaas ng presyo ng pagkain, utilidad, at iba pang bilihin. Kailangan ding imbestigahan ang status ng energy sources ng bansa sa kabila ng mga reported shortages and blackouts. Meron po ngayon kasalukuyang blackout na nangyayari sa ibat-ibang lugar sa ating bansa, sa ibat ang ibang bahagi ng Pilipinas ngayong araw na ito. Mr. Speaker, naninindigan ang representasyong ito na responsibilidad ng gobyerno na tiyakin na abot kaya ang presyo ng basic commodities at utilities. Hindi dapat ipasakamay sa mga pribadong korporasyon na ipinapanguna ang interes ng tubo ang batayang serbisyong kailangan ng ating mamamayan. Mahigpit na tututulan ng representasyong ito ang taas singil sa presyo ng kuryente at iba pang utilidad. Muli, maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Adjourn the Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Arlene D. Brosas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the gentleman from the Kabataan Partilist, the Honorable Raoul Daniel A. Manuel, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
Representative Manuel is recognized to avail of the privilege hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Pagbati sa lahat na ating mga kapwa-mambabatas. Isang mapagpalang hapon sa lahat, lalo na sa ating mga kapakabataan at mamamayang Pilipino. Ang kabataang Pilipino ay bumubuo ng malaking bahagi ng populasyon ng Pilipinas. Ayon sa datos ng Philippine Statistics Authority, kalakhaan ng bilang na mga empleyado ngayon ay kinabubuan ng millennials na nasa edad 24 hanggang 34 na taong gulang. Bukod dito, ang tinatawag na Gen Zs ang bumubuo ng 45% ng ating populasyon. Sila ang kinikilalang henerasyon na malakas at pursigido, magsipagtapos ng high school, tumuloy sa kolehiyo, at kung may pagkakataon, hanggang sa professional o graduate schools. Walang kaduda-duda na ang mga kabataang Pilipino ay masisigasig at mahigpit na pinahahalagahan ang esensya ng edukasyon. Sa kabila ng lahat ng ito, napakarami pa ring kahirapan ang dinaranas ng mga kabataan sa loob at labas ng mga eskwelahan. Kabila sa mga ito, ang patuloy na pagtataas ng tuition and other school fees sa mga pamantasan, ang bang pagpapatupad ng mandatory ROTC, at pagbaba ng kalidad at access sa edukasyon sa ating bansa na dumadagdag sa pagpapalala ng kasalukuyang mental health crisis ng mga kabataang estudyante. Sa kasalukuyan, Mr. Speaker, umaabot na sa 150,000 pesos ang average tuition rate ng mga pribadong eskwelahan sa Pilipinas ayon sa pagtataya ng grupong Rise for Education. Dahil sa kawalan ng regulasyon sa pagtataas na mga bayaring ito, taon-taon patuloy na lumulobo ang binabayaran ng mga estudyante at magulang. Sa kasalukuyan ding tala ng Rise for Education, magtataas ng tuition and other school fees ang top universities sa Pilipinas ng mula tatlo hanggang sampung porsyento. Katumbas nito ang libo-libong dagdag bayarin para sa mga estudyante at kanilang mga pamilya. Kasama nito, lalong nalalayo ang mga kabataan na estudyante sa kanilang karapatan sa edukasyon. Hinahati ang mga kabataang may kaya at ang mga kabataang hindi kayo makapagbayan. at ang mga kabataang hindi kayang makapagbayad para sa ganong karapatan na hindi naman dapat nangyayari. Nakabitin din sa ibabaw ng ulo ng mga kabataan ang muling pagpapatupad ng mandatory ROTC sa mga kolehiyo at universidad. Talamak ang paglalabas ng misleading survey numbers at ang pagkukubli ng katangian ng ganitong programa bilang instrumento ng militarisasyon sa mga campus at pagsupil sa mga estudyanteng kritikal. Kamakailan lamang, nagpublish ang Social Weather Station o SWS ng isang survey kung saan 42% ng mga tinanong ay naniniwalang optionalang dapat ang ROTC. At 22% ang naniniwalang dapat hindi isama sa curriculum ang ROTC. Ito ay taliwas sa isa namang commission survey na nagpakita di umano ng malaking suporta para sa pagpapanumbalik ng mandatory ROTC. Ngunit, sa pagkakaboong tanong sa naturang survey, ay pinagmumukhang kontra-nasyonalismo ang mga sasagot ng hindi sa mandatory ROTC. Nandyan din ang kasalukuyang panukala na ilunsad ang programang ROTC Games sa loob ng mga pamantasan, una sa Cebu. Ang paglulunsad ng programang ROTC Games ay isang smokescreen, isang distraksyon para mailayo ang tanaw ng mga kabataan mula sa kasaysayan at kultura ng abuso at impunity ng AFP at PNP na nais nilang ipasok sa ating mga pamantasan at sa mga utak at puso ng ating kabataan. Pilit nilang pinapabango ang isang programa na simula pa lang ng panahon ni Mark Wilson Tsuwa ay umaalingasaw na. Lahat ng ito ay umaambag sa papalawak at papalalim na mental health crisis na kasalukuyang kinakaharap ng mga estudyante ng bansa. Ayon sa datos ng American Psychological Association, noong taong 2019, mga Gen Z ang pinakamadalas na nakakaranas ng stress, anxiety, at depression. Ito ay maaring dulot ng kanilang matinding exposure sa social media, pati na rin sa laganap na kahirapan, inhustisia, at marami pang iba. Tinagurian silang most depressed generation. According to the National Statistics Office, mental health illnesses rank as the third most common form of morbidity among Filipinos, while depression is the eighth largest cause of disability in the country. Mental health is just as serious as physical health because it impacts every aspect of a person's life. Sa kabila nito, Mr. Speaker, mababa ang kalidad at accessibility ng ating mental health services. Kung kaya't maraming mga kaso ng mental health conditions sa hanay ng kabataan ang hindi natutugunan at hindi rin nauulat. Nakakalungkot ding isipi na iilan lamang ang practicing child psychiatrists sa bansa at kalakhan sa kanila ay nasa NCR o National Capital Region. Sa ating mga paaralan, ramdam din ang krise sa usapin ng pagtugon sa mental health needs. Nearly 800,000 out of 28 million na mag-aaral sa mga pampublikong paaralan ang nangangailangan ng suporta mula sa guidance counselors noong kasagsagan ng pandemya. Pero dahil sa kakapusan ng guidance counselors, tiyak na marami pang mga estudyante ang hindi kayang o hindi na kaya ng maabot ng ganong serbisyo. Binibigyang diin ng ganitong kalagayan na dapat kilalanin at supportahan ang ating guidance counselors dahil sa bigat na kanilang ginagampan. Before I proceed with my speech, I would like to issue a trigger warning because of the mention of suicide. Ang patuloy na pagtaas ng suicide cases sa bansa ay bagay na hindi dapat isawalang bahala. Noong academic year 2021 to 2022, daan-daang basic education students sa ibat-ibang panig ng bansa ang naging biktima ng suicide. Samantalang libo-libo naman ang bilang na mga estudyanteng nagdangkang gawin ito. Sa pag-aaral ng UP Population Institute noong 2021, isa sa limang kabataan edad 15 to 24 ay nagkaroon ng suicidal ideation. In terms of suicide attempts in the same age group, from 3% in 2013, the rate more than doubled to 7.5% in 2021. Many are not aware of suicide prevention services and only 1 out of 10 young Filipinos were able to reach out for help. Bago pa man dumating ang pandemya, narian na rin ang ilang factors na kaognay ng o nakakaapekto sa mental health ng ating mga kabataan at kababayan. Halimbawa, bilang isang cyclone-prone country, ang kawalan ng pagkain, pagkasira ng bahay, at pagkaulila dala ng bagyo, lindol, at iba pang kalamidad ay may matinding epekto sa disposisyon ng tao. May pinsala rin sa mental health ng mga kabataan ang state-sponsored harassment, vilification, at redtagging na siyang tugon sa halip na pakinggan ang mga hinaying ng ating sektor. Sa hanay ng mga kabataan, merong anxiety, panic attacks, at trauma sa takot na baka maging susunod na biktima ng online or offline attacks. O baka kakatukoy ng police para hikayatin na tumigil sa pagiging aktibong kabataan sa komunidad o paaralan. Dahil sa pagdedemonize ng ilang state forces sa pagtindigna ating mga kabataan na nandyan sa ibat-ibang mga community activities, pati mismo mga kakilala nila ay direkta silang nireredtag. This contributes to their depression and their feelings of being unsafe. Ano po ang kulminasyon ng lahat ng mga issue na nabanggit? According to the latest government and World Bank data in 2021, out of every 10 students who enter primary education, only 9 are able to finish. Out of the 9 students, only 7 pushed through with secondary education. Of the 7, only 6 were able to graduate from high school. Of the 6, only 2 continued to higher education. And lastly, mula dun sa sampu na ngayon ay dalawa na lamang, only 1 of them completed college. Our country's tertiary education participation rate of 35% in 2021 is significantly lower than the 43% global average during the same year. Mr. Speaker, kabataan ang pag-asa ng bayan. Ngunit, mapapanindigan lamang ng kabataan ang papel na ito kapag naagapayan ng estado ang kanilang paglago at pagkatuto sa pamamagitan ng pagtataguyod ng makabayan, siyentipiko, at makamasang edukasyon. Edukasyon kung saan ang lahat ng kabataan ay merong access, lahat ng kabataan ay ligtas at malayang makakapag-aral ng kanilang nanaisin at hinhubog sila na maging aktibong mga mamamayan. Yung lamang po, Mr. Speaker, maraming salamat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Raoul Manuel to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. None. Motion approved.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the Honorable Congressman Mark Koangko of the 2nd District of Pangasinan be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Koangko is recognized. Please proceed.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I rise in a matter of personal and collective privilege regarding the plan of PA to purchase biofertilizers. Uh, I have heard that there is a plan to purchase up to 2.5 billion pesos worth of biofertilizers. Mr. Speaker, uh, I would just like to point out that in the past, fertilizer scams have been centered around this kind of biofertilizers. And so I would like us, the Philippines, to be very careful in the expenditure of these kinds of monies uh, for the purchase of something which is not sure to benefit our farmers. Alam niyo po, Mr. Speaker, dati, a few months ago, ang urea nasa umabot na po hanggang 2,500 pesos per bag. And so baka nagkaroon ng driver to think about alternative fertilizers. But now, the price of urea has dropped to 1,230 pesos per bag. And we need 2 bags per hectare of rice. So that's 2,460 pesos. Ito pong uh, uh, urea po na ito is 50 kilos per bag. So that's a total of 100 kilos of fertilizer. Ito pong, pagkaintindi ko, baka naman nagkakamali po ako na biofertilizer is only 5 grams po. Isang paketing maliit, no? And uh, hindi ko po alam kung, kung tama o maliitong presyong ito, but uh, 6,000 pesos per packet. Uh, but even if it were, if I'm mistaken, and it is only 6 pesos per packet, uh, masyado pa ring mahal compared to urea, no? Uh, very big price discrepancy sa effect. Kasi ang percentage po ng nitrogen po nito is only 1%. Ang percentage po ng nitrogen ng urea is 46%. So there is uh, 100 kilograms po of urea in 2,000, what did I say kanina? In um, 2,460 pesos. But at uh, at 5 grams per packet, no, to equal 50 kilograms, at 5 grams, we need uh, how many? Over 1,000 packets po. So ano na po ang presyo nito? Ang akin po, sana, uh, tayo po ay magkaroon ng hiring tungkol po dito sa biofertilizer na ito. At usisain po natin mabuti. I would like to share with this August body what happened in Sri Lanka. Uh, in the spring of 2021, ang kanilang presidente po ay nagruling na wala na pong gagamit ng chemical fertilizer, so pinagbawal po niya pati ang pesticides. And dun po nag umpisa, magcollapse ang economy ng Sri Lanka. Within 6 months, bumagsak po ang production ng palay ng 20%. So ang target po nila is to save uh, around 400 million US dollars in avoided importation of chemical fertilizers. Within 6 months, they had to import more than 400 million dollars worth of rice. Ano pong nangyari? Yung 400 million dollars, imbes na napunta sa magsasakang Tagas-Sri Lanka, napunta po sa magsasakan ng taga ibang bansa. And so yung po ang nagprecipitate ng collapse noong kanilang ekonomiya. And so huwag po nating biroin po ito. Uh, this is a very serious matter that we ought to give attention to right, right away. Ito pong hawak kong dokumento is from the Office of Secretary. Ang nakapirma po dito si Under Secretary Leocadio Sebastian, Ceso One. And ito po yung guidelines sa uh, biofertilizer na they are about to implement. Ang gusto niya, for, for every amount of chemical fertilizer, may kasamang biofertilizer. Usisain po natin ito mga colleagues dahil nakakatakot po ito. If you remember, the past fertilizer scams na bilyong-bilyong peso ay napunta lang sa bulsa ng iilan tao. So with that, I would like to warn Congress, the Senate, our people regarding this very serious matter. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Mark O. Koangko to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? Chair here stand. Motion approved. Please proceed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from the 3rd District of Nueva Ecija, the Representative Rosana Ria V. Vergara to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Vergara is recognized to avail of the privilege hour. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, fellow colleagues. To all listening to our August chamber, the healthcare sector in our country is facing an unprecedented crisis due to the massive exodus of our healthcare workers to first world countries. And while it brought me a sense of pride to see that 2 Filipinos were invite, 2 Filipino nurses were invited to King Charles coronation, the truth is, we are losing our healthcare workers to better paying jobs with better working conditions abroad. Recently, my brother-in-law experienced a painful medical procedure due to the med tech's lack of expertise in handling patients with small veins. It took her several tries before the procedure was finally successful, causing him bruises on both arms for a whole week. They were not successful in drawing blood, so he was asked to come back the next day when a more senior med tech would be around to draw his blood. On the other hand, during my recent visit to the hospital for a blood test at a private hospital, the med tech drew my blood painlessly. When I commanded her and asked her how long she had been working there, she replied 3 years. I encouraged her to stay longer, but she revealed that she had already applied for a job in Canada and was just waiting for her papers to be processed. She cited better pay and opportunities as her reasons for leaving, which is a common story among healthcare workers in our country. This med tech was very young, maybe only in her early 30s. I asked her, "How do you think we can address the problem of our country with so many healthcare workers leaving?" And of course, her first response was, "Better pay for all healthcare workers." And her next suggestion, sana po holistic ang pagtingin ng gobyerno sa lahat ng HCW. Hindi lang po sa mga doktor at nurses. Kami pong mga med tech, people who draw blood, at mga radiotechnologists, people who perform x-rays and read city scans, to name a few. Madalas po kami nakakadimutan. In short, ang gusto niya, sana all. She told me that her gross pay was 25,000 a month versus a nurse who was making 34,000. And while she recognizes the differential in salary grade due to hours' work and responsibilities given, she said the disparity shouldn't be too big. A Canadian hospital she was moving to would be giving her more than 2,000 Canadian dollars or roughly 82,000 pesos per month, more than a 200% increase from her current salary. And this is even on the lower end of the salary scale in Canada. In 2010, long before the COVID-19 pandemic, the World Health Organization adopted a global code of practice on the international recruitment of health personnel. This was in response to the mass exodus of healthcare workers from countries in Africa suffering from the AIDS epidemic. To address this exodus, governments of these African countries channeled public funds to educate more doctors, nurses, and healthcare workers. And while they were producing enough graduates, these graduates were being hired by richer countries with better offers than their country could, that their country could never match. It is to be noted that the WHO code does not impinge on an individual's right to migrate, but it appeals to the wealthy nations to recruit through bilateral agreements and to work with the health ministry in the countries of origin. En cambio de un reclutamiento organizado de trabajadores de salud, el país de destino debería proporcionar apoyo para iniciativas de salud diseñadas por el país de origen. Los países de destino también deben ofrecer aprendizaje y retorno en los que los trabajadores de salud con nuevas habilidades vuelven a casa después de un periodo de tiempo. Desafortunadamente, más de diez años después, este código global de práctica sobre el reclutamiento internacional de personal de salud no está siendo implementado. De hecho, hay agencias de reclutamiento extranjeros que físicamente vienen a las Filipinas, hablan directamente con los trabajadores de salud, ofrecen paquetes de beneficios atractivos e incluso recompensas financieras para bloquear el compromiso mientras los documentos de inmigración están siendo procesados. Dado el enorme diferencia en el salario, más del 200%, ¿cómo pueden nuestros trabajadores de salud resistir la oferta de un mejor trabajo y probablemente incluso una mejor vida en otros países? Según el doctor Georgia Cometto, un experto en problemas de trabajo de salud trabajando en la Organización Mundial de Salud, la migración de trabajadores de salud de países de baja renta a los de alta renta ha aumentado un 60% de 2006 a 2016. Este problema solo se ha empeorado debido a la pandemia COVID-19, lo cual destaca la necesidad urgente de actuar rápidamente. Como políticos, es imperativo actuar para resolver el exceso masivo de migración de nuestros trabajadores de salud y el impacto negativo que esto está causando para el sector de la salud de nuestro país. Para resolver la escasez de trabajadores de salud, debemos implementar un programa y estrategia de política que enfatice la producción y la retención de trabajadores capacitados junto con regular las agencias privadas involucradas en el reclutamiento. Esto debería involucrar invertir en programas de educación y entrenamiento para los trabajadores de salud para asegurar una oferta estable de profesionales capacitados así como ofrecer salarios competitivos y condiciones de trabajo mejores para mantenerlos. También es importante fortalecer la regulación de las agencias de reclutamiento y establecer acuerdos bilaterales entre los países para manejar la migración de trabajadores de salud como expresado en el Código de la ONU. Estos acuerdos deben tener un componente financiero. Por ejemplo, podemos requerir que estos países extranjeros provean de patrocinio educativo para financiar los estudios de estudiantes filipinos entrando en el campo médico. Debemos encontrar formas de aliviar y resolver los efectos de las estrategias de reclutamiento agresivas de los países extranjeros. Por último, una base de datos comprensiva sobre los trabajadores de salud debe ser desarrollada para ayudar a planear las necesidades del trabajo y desarrollar políticas que beneficien tanto al sector de la salud como a los trabajadores. La evidencia de la cantidad de trabajadores de salud que han migrado es clara. Estos números solo aumentarán con el tiempo y empeorarán nuestro sistema de salud ya frágil. Durante la reunión del comité de apropiación de la semana pasada, se reveló que en 2020 ya hay una escasez de 127,000 enfermeras y 104,000 médicos anualmente. Esto es lo más alarmante, ya que sólo producimos 4,387 médicos al año y 10,645 enfermeras anualmente. Si ahora actuamos a favor de que los gobiernos de estos países participen en el reclutamiento adecuado y justo de nuestros trabajadores de salud, combinado con la obligación o compromiso que tienen, podemos ganar beneficios económicos y sociales mientras protegemos el sector de salud y, finalmente, el bienestar de todos los filipinos y las generaciones a venir. El enfoque fragmentado hacia resolver el problema de la migración, combinado con la falta de urgencia, solo ha hecho el problema peor. Debemos plenamente articular el predicamento de nuestro país y la necesidad urgente de resolver los desafíos enfrentados por nuestros trabajadores de salud. Nosotros, filipinos, no solo nuestros trabajadores de salud, necesitamos reencender, despertar y renovar nuestro amor por nuestro país. "El amor por el país, el amor por la tierra, el amor por la tierra. El amor que se da desde el corazón, el amor que se da por encima de la cabeza. Esto es lo que se debe tener en todos los filipinos". A menos que comencemos con esto como la fundación del servicio que ofrecemos, entonces ninguna iniciativa de nuestro gobierno, sector privado, agencias regulatorias puede ser sostenida. Mientras que entendemos y respetamos las razones válidas por las que algunos filipinos eligen migrar, también debemos reconocer el impacto que tiene en nuestro país. Lo debemos a nuestros trabajadores de salud para proporcionarles condiciones de trabajo mejores, salarios y oportunidades. Debemos trabajar juntos para construir un sistema de salud más fuerte y más resiliente para nuestro país. Si retrasamos y permitimos que la tendencia decepcionante continúe, estamos arriesgando el futuro de nuestra nación. Salud es riqueza, señor presidente. Debemos actuar rápidamente antes de que la pandemia ataque. "Esto es lo mejor que puedo hacer".
Gracias, mayoría líder.
Señor presidente, me refiero a que referamos el discurso de la honrada Rosana Ria V. Vergara al comité y reglamos la acción adecuada.
¿Hay alguna objeción? Señor presidente, la moción está aprobada.
Señor presidente, me refiero a que terminemos la hora de la privacidad.
¿Hay alguna objeción? Señor presidente, la moción está aprobada.
Señor presidente, me refiero a que consideremos la tercera lectura del proyecto de la Cámara número 7751, las copias de los cuales fueron distribuidas a los miembros a continuación de las reglas de la Cámara.
¿Hay alguna objeción? Señor presidente, la moción está aprobada.
Para este propósito, señor presidente, me refiero a que el secretario general se dirija a leer el título de la medida y luego llame a la elección de voto nominal.
El secretario general se dirige. Por favor, proceda.
Proyecto de la Cámara número 7751, un acto estableciendo centros especiales en hospitales bajo la supervisión y control directo del Departamento de Salud y fondos apropiativos, por lo tanto. Elección de miembros en consideración y tercera lectura del proyecto de la Cámara número 7751. honrados miembros: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Shato, Chua, Tsungalau, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Koangco Jaime, Koangco Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Koresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Vanessa, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Fariñas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galeos, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagadorn, Jerezco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Lim Kai Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisai, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuon, Ordanes, Ortega, Owanodison, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisias Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Ylohiyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Tallo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwon, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Theodoro, Teves Jose, Tiangko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiaraza Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jayzel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. segunda elección de miembros en consideración del proyecto de la Cámara número 7751. Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Brosas, Buahin, Kawagdan, Castro Franz, Ko Angelika Natasha, Kolada, Cruz Ricardo, De Vanessa, Duavit, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Fariñas, García Albert, García Dante, Guiko, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Manuel, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Kimbo, Roman, Romero, Santos, Singson Rishel, Solon, Suwon, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut. Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Ti, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap Eric, Yu Jayzel Victoria.
Con 256 miembros votando en la afirmativa, cero en la negativa y cero abstentos, el proyecto de la Cámara número 7751 es aprobado en tercera y última lectura. Con la permiso del mayoría líder, el oficial presidiendo me gustaría manifestar su deseo de incluir como parte del registro su explicación de voto para el proyecto de la Cámara número 7751. Gracias. Por favor, proceda, mayoría líder.
Señor presidente, me refiero a que consideremos la tercera lectura del proyecto de la Cámara número 7393, las copias de las cuales fueron distribuidas a los miembros a continuación de las reglas de la Cámara. Para este propósito, me refiero a que el secretario general se dirija a leer el título de la medida y luego llame a la elección de voto nominal.
El secretario general se dirige a hacerlo. Por favor, proceda.
Proyecto de la Cámara número 7393, un acto regulando el uso de cuentas financieras. Elección de miembros en consideración y tercera lectura del proyecto de la Cámara número 7393. Honrados representantes: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Shato, Chua, Tsungalau, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Koangco Jaime, Koangco Mark, Kolada, Koliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Koresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Vanessa, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Fariñas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galeos, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Sandro, Goriseta. Mark, Golles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne. Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodison, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelohio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yeda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon. Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarazza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jayzel Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Second call of members in consideration of House Bill number 7393. Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez Pantaleon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buahin, Kawagdan, Co Angelica Natasha, Colada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Guico, Labad Labad, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Kimbo, Roman, Romero, Santos, Singson Rishel, Solon, Suwan, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Ti, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap Eric, Yu Jayzel Victoria.
With two hundred and fifty-six members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 7393 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7446, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to do so. Please proceed.
House Bill number 7446, an act promoting transparent governance and instituting anti-corruption mechanisms in the operation of banks and other financial institutions, amending for the purpose Republic Act number 1405 entitled "An Act Prohibiting Disclosure of or Inquiry into Deposits with Any Banking Institution and Providing Penalty Therefore." Roll call of members in consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7446. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Ataidi, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Copilar, Co Juanco Jaime, Co Juanco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Koresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Golles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne. Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodison, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelohio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yeda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvames, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarazza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jayzel Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Second call of members in consideration of House Bill number 7446. Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez Pantaleon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buahin, Kawagdan, Co Angelica Natasha, Colada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Guico, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Kimbo, Roman, Romero, Santos, Singson Rishel, Solon, Suwan, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino. Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Ti, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap Eric, Yu Jayzel
With two hundred and fifty-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 7446 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7535, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to do the same. Please proceed.
House Bill 7535, an act granting additional benefits to Filipino centenarians, recognizing octogenarians and noncentenarians, appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose of Republic Act number 10868, otherwise known as the Centenarians Act of 2016. Roll call of members in consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7535. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Ataidi, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Copilar, Co Juanco Jaime, Co Juanco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Koresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Golles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Oanodison, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicias Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Repto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelohio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yeda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvames, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarazza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jayzel Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration of House Bill number 7535. Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez Pantaleon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buahin, Kawagdan, Co Angelica Natasha, Colada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Guico, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Kimbo, Roman, Romero, Santos, Singson Rishel, Solon, Suwan, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Ti, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap Eric, Yu Jayzel Victoria.
With two hundred and fifty-seven members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 7535 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7540, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed. Please proceed.
House Bill number 7540, an act strengthening the special program in creative arts for junior and senior high school and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7540. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Ataidi, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascog, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayunui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalau, Co Angelica Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Copilar, Co Juanco Jaime, Co Juanco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Koresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Golles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne. Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita. Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Primicia, Sagabas, Pomarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelo Yo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yedemari, Romaldo Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santo, Saulog, Salverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Chango, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chator, T., Umalion, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaforte Luis Raymond, Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, U. Divina Grace, U. J. Zell Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 7540: Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buhaing, Kawagdan, Ko Angelika Natasha, Kolada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Gwiko, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Santos, Singson Richel, Solon, Suwan, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, T., Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Yap Eric, U. J. Zell Victoria.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading.
With two hundred and fifty-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7540 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill 7561, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill 7561, an act providing for mandatory insurance, coverage, and benefits for all line workers. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7561. Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Acharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buhaing, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahainui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Kolantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kurisma, Dagoh, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar de los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ekleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero Esparres, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Gwiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Haresko, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun Sanney, Lara, Lazatin, Lee Ligarda, Libanan, Lim Ketchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Primicia, Sagabas, Pomarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelo Yo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yedemari, Romaldo Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santo, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Chango, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tuporti, Umalion, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villafeto Luis Raymond, Villafeto Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, U. Divina Grace, U. J. Zell Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7561: Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buhaing, Kawagdan, Ko Angelika Natasha, Kolada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Gwiko, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Santos, Singson Richel, Solon, Suwan, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, T., Villafeto Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Yap Eric, U. J. Zell Victoria.
With two hundred and fifty-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7561 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill 7576, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill Number 7576, an act providing for early voting by qualified senior citizens, persons with disabilities, lawyers, and human resources for help in national and local elections. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7576: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Acharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buhaing, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahainui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Kolantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kurisma, Dagoh, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza de Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar de los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ekleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero Esparres, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Gwiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Haresko, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun Sanney, Lara, Lazatin, Lee Ligarda, Libanan, Lim Ketchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Primicia, Sagabas, Pomarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelo Yo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yedemari, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santo, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Chango, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Yutor, T., Umalion, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaforte Luis Raymond, Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, U. Divina Grace, U. J. Zell Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 7576: Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buhaing, Kawagdan, Ko Angelika Natasha, Kolada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Gwiko, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Santos, Singson Richel, Solon, Suwan, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, T., Villaforte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Yap Eric, U. J. Zell Victoria.
With two hundred and fifty-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill 7576 is hereby approved on third and final reading. With the permission of the Majority Leader, the presiding officer would like to manifest to insert in the record my explanation of vote for House Bill 7576. Please proceed.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7584, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant with the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here stands. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed. Please proceed.
House Bill 7584, an act allowing elementary and secondary learners with unpaid tuition and other school fees to take their periodic and final examinations on good cause and justifiable grounds. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7584: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Acharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buhaing, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahainui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Wanko Jaime, Ko Wanko Mark, Kolada, Kolantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kurisma, Dagoh, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar de los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ekleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero Esparres, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Farinyas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Flores Fortes, Frasco Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galeios, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Gwiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Haresko, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun Sanney, Lara, Lazatin, Lee Ligarda, Libanan, Lim Ketchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta.
Mister Speaker.
Please proceed.
My vote for the House Bill is yes, with reservation, and I would like to explain that reservation later. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Manuel, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Primicia, Sagabas, Pomarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelo Yo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yedemari, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sa Garbaria, Sa Kaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santo, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chaitan, Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Jose, Chango, Chango, Cheng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tuporti, Umalion, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villafeto Luis Raymond, Villafeto Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yam Suwan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, U. Divina Grace, U. J. Zell Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7584: Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buhaing, Kawagdan, Ko Angelika Natasha, Kolada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinyas, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Gwiko, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Santos, Singson Richel, Solon, Suwan, Taliado, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, T., Villafeto Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Yap Eric, U. J. Zell Victoria.
With two hundred and fifty-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7584 is hereby approved on third and final reading.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Manuel of the Kabataan Party List to explain his vote.
The Honorable Manuel is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Naniniwala ang representasyong ito na mahalaga ang karapatan ng mga kabataan na ipagpatuloy ang kanilang edukasyon, lalong-lalo na ang mga kabataan mula sa mas mahihirap na pamilya. Nagsumite tayo ng panokalang batas upang mawakasan ang pahirap na practice ng pagbabawal sa mga estudyante na kumuha ng kanilang mga exam habang hindi pa nila nababayaran ng buo ang kanilang tuition and other school fees dahil sa kadalasan ay hindi naman sadya na hindi sila makapagbayad at bunga lamang ito ng kahirapan, mababang sahod, kawalan ng regularisasyon, at pagtaas ng presyo ng mga bilihin na taon-taon ay bumabagabag sa maraming pamilang Pilipino. Ang pulisiyang ito ay madalas tawaging no permit, no exam policy. Binuo natin ang panokalang batas na ito para maprotektahan ang karapatan sa edukasyon sa gitna ng krise. Binuo natin ang panokalang batas na ito para maprotektahan ang karapatan sa edukasyon sa gitna ng krisis sa ekonomiya. Habang sinasalubong nitong House Bill ang hinaiing ng mga kabataan, mahalagang makita na may mga paraan pa rin upang malusutan ang mga proteksyon na binibigay ng batas na ito sa ating mga estudyante. Nananatili ang luwag para sa mga abusadong kapitalistang edukador na maningil sa mga estudyante at hindi kilalanin ang kalagayan ng mga estudyante at kanilang pamilya. Maaring hindi mapanagot ng mas mabigat ang mga ganong tipo ng kapitalista edukador. Ikalawang pagkakataon na ito, Mr. Speaker, na umaabot sa ikatlong pagbasa ang isang panokalang batas kaugnay ng no permit, no exam na nananatiling may butas. This representation asserts that there should be no leeway to still implement practices that connect payment schedules to exam schedules. We should take away the power from authorities to deny the progress of schooling from those who could not afford to pay regardless of the reason, so that we are not treating students and their families with bad faith. Ang hangarin ng kabataan ay isang bansa kung saan maaring mag-aral ang lahat na hindi nahadlangan ng mga bayarin. Kaya naman nananatili ang ating responsibilidad upang tanggalin ang lahat ng mga balakin. With that, Mr. Speaker, we vote yes with reservation to this House Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7620, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here is not. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed. Please proceed.
House Bill Number 7620, an act prescribing the use of Neo-Ethnic Philippine textiles in the academic regalia of all state and local universities and colleges and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill 7620. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advinkola, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Atayde, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Borilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulitbiktang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagaskahain, Ui, Calderon, Calisto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro, Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Kopilar, Ko Wanko, Haime, Ko Wanko, Mark, Kolada, Koliandes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuressma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog Dayang Hirang Daza de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo, Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo, Sitiamina, Junisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleio, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galaeos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose, Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Green, Gata, Go, Ed Christopher, Go, Mark, Golles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Rosetta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Ko Hongun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun Sanil, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Linkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariana Hernandez, Marinyon, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Navan, Isai Noel, Nogralas Juan Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uanodison, Padhernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisia, Sagabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yedemari, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque Sackdalan, Sagarbiriya, Sagaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Saulog, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chay, Tan Watko, Terriela, Theodoro, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Chator, Ti, Umalie, Unavia, Ungab, Valeriano Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia. Villia Ferreti Luis Raymond, Villia Ferreti Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yamsuwan, Yap, Cristiantele, Yap, Christopherson, Yap, Edvick, Yap, Eric, Udivina Grace, UJZ Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7620. Abalos, Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Aquino, Arenas, Bautista, Biron, Bondok, Buahin, Kawagdan, Ko Angelika Natasha, Kolada, Cruz Ricardo, De Venesia, Duavit, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Emano, Enverga, Farinas, Garcia Albert, Guico, Labad Labad, Lagman, Luistro, Malapitan, Marcoleta, Mastura, Mercado, Nava, Nogralas Juan Felipe, Paglas, Romero, Santos, Singson Rachel, Solon, Suwan, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tolentino, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Ti, Villia Ferreti Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Yap, Eric, and UJZ Victoria.
With two hundred sixty members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill Number 7620 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Before we continue, the Chair would like to manifest that he was informed by the Secretariat of a correction in the result of nominal voting on House Bill Number 7751. That the body earlier approved the third reading, the correct result is as follows. Affirmative votes: two hundred fifty-seven instead of two hundred fifty-six. Negative votes and abstentions remain at zero. In view thereof, let the records reflect the said result. In addition, the Chair would like to manifest to include for the record his explanation of vote for House Bill 7584. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we immediately transmit the bills that we had just approved on third reading to the Senate.
Is there any objection? Chair here is not. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until Tuesday, May nine, three P.M.
Is there any objection? Chair here is not. Motion is approved. Session is adjourned.